Beautiful, yeah.
Unbelievable.
All right, good evening. This is the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, October 18th, 2016. And we'll call to order, tonight we are joined by Barbara Martin of our office, who is our licensing agent, including for matters such as RCN, which is on the agenda a little bit later this evening, and is filling in for Emily Martin tonight, so thank you Barbara. The first item is review of meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from September 27, 2016, as written.
Second.
One in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Future meeting dates, we're scheduled to meet on October 25th, which would be for interviews for the town administrator candidates, we'll hear more about that later on this evening. November 2nd, which is a Wednesday rather than a Tuesday due to scheduling conflicts, November 15th and the 29th. Do those dates still work for everyone?
Yep, I'm pretty sure they do, yeah.
Okay, great. Citizens speak. Do we have anyone tonight who would like to address the board at Citizens Speak? Yes, sir?
Hi, my name's Keith Schleicher, I'm a town meeting-
Could you walk to the table and speak into the microphone so that they can pick you up on television? We'll just need your street address also, Mr. Schleicher.
Sure, my name's Keith Schleicher, I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 4, I live at 376 Blue Hills Parkway, and I just wanted to come tonight and voice my support for the Ice House development. Earlier today, I sent the board members and also the planning board, the petition that I started on Friday, which as of right now has 256 signs, people have signed it, that's only since Friday. So, there is an overwhelming number of support for the Ice House development, I think it'd be a great addition to our section of town in West Milton. East Milton has the Fruit Center, which is great, but it's not the easiest place to get to when you live on the other side of town. So, I just came here tonight to say that, you know, as someone that's gonna live diagonally across the street from there, I'd love to see a nice, small, smart, commercial marketplace going there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Keith.
Is there anyone else tonight who would like to speak at Citizens Speak? Okay, then seeing none, we have a public hearing scheduled for 7:15, it's 7:06, so why don't we take one of the other items that is on our agenda, we can't start that until 7:15. We have after that another public hearing at 7:30, which depending on how long it takes to get through the 7:15 hearing, we'll open the 7:30 public hearing immediately after that hearing.
I'll put Dominic in town and do that quickly.
Yes, I think that's the next one we could do, yes. So, item 10 is the Town Employee Internet Use Policy. We've previously discussed this, it was a question that Mr. Hurley had raised-
Yeah, I've raised it, I'm fine with it.
And I'm fine with it as well. So, I'll make a motion to approve the town's employee internet usage policy as written.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. For number 11, are we waiting for, is the town court planning to join us?
No, the town court will not be joining us for number 11.
Okay, the number 11 is an early voting sign policy. The town court had provided us with a draft, we have a revised draft that came over late this afternoon from town council pertaining to the early voting period and the placing of signs on town property. Because town hall will be the location for the early voting, there's a need for a policy that governs placards and signs and materials being distributed on the premises.
And this is consistent with a regular election distance from the polling places?
That's my understanding.
Yes, same as exact.
Yes.
So, I'll make a motion to approve early voting sign policies as written.
And I'll second that motion.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Number 12, we have a 100th birthday proclamation for a resident.
Okay, I'll move to approve and sign a proclamation to celebrate the 100th birthday of Agnes Batiglia?
Batiglia.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? I noticed she had quite a storied story about her for former Mayor James Michael Curley.
Yes.
Wonderful.
It's a name my dad used to talk about a lot, it was pretty interesting to see that, but she speaks four languages and raised quite a family in town.
Incredible.
Congratulations to Agnes Batiglia on her 100th birthday. All in favor, they've got motion to approve the proclamation?
Aye.
Aye. Number 13 is a municipal election to the Boston Regional Metropolitan Planning Organization, and this is to vote on four open seats.
I'll make a motion to authorize the chairman to vote on the board's behalf for the four municipal open seats, which include Farmingham, Bedford, Seminole, and Brantree for the Boston Regional Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Second motion.
Any discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number 14 is a one-day liquor license in St. Pius.
I'll move to approve a one-day liquor license in St. Pius, the town parish, for a karaoke night to be held at 101 Walcott Road on Saturday, November 12th, 2016, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we have a couple of boards and committee appointments. First one is the Max Ullman Skating Rink Lease Committee.
Okay, I'll do this one. Propose a motion to appoint Claire F. Keating of 28 Holland Street, Peter Mullen of 36 Edward Avenue, Kevin B. Chisholm of 62 Cortland Circle, David T. Burns of 24 Guyfair Road, and William B. Clark of 525 Canton Ave. to the Max Ullman Skating Rink Lease Committee through May 2017.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have an appointment to the retirement board, this is, Chief King has stepped down from the retirement board, and we have, does the town administrator wish to speak to this?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The Board of Selectmen had one appointment on the retirement board. Your appointment was Police Chief John King. Since he's taken over as police chief, his duties have increased and his nightly meetings have increased as well, and he has resigned from this committee, and so my recommendation is for the board to appoint your HR Director, Paige E. Bolito, as the board's representative to the retirement board.
Great. I'll make a motion to fill a vacancy created by the resignation of John King by appointing Paige E. Bolito as the board's board of selectmen's representative on the retirement board to serve through July of 2018.
Second.
I believe that's the end of Chief King's term, so she's filling, serving out the term. Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
I think that's as much as we can do with it.
We still have a few minutes before we can open the public hearing. Does the town administrator wish to give a report at this time?
I actually don't have a report this evening, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Go ahead. Go ahead, I want to say, there's a, the Friends of the Crew are having their event at First Parish on Friday night. As of last night, there were still tickets available to Good Guys, and it sounds like a lot of fun, too. I think they call it, I forget what they-
It's Head of the Carbs.
Carbs, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, instead of Head of the Childs, Head of the Carbs. And they have all of the participating restaurants from Milton, I guess, which is great.
And they have dirty water drink, dirty martinis.
That should attract a crowd.
Very creative. So, it should be a good time.
And I'd like to add that the Swim for Sports, the Boosters fundraiser the other day, on Tuesday, last Tuesday, at Wallaston Golf Course was a huge success. It was great to see so many people from across the town, all ages, participating to give back to the Milton High School sports programs, and wish them the best. And I know that they have a big football game this weekend, the Wildcats against Wellesley, so we wish them well, along with all the other sports. They have a tremendous athletic program now, let's hope that they can sustain it.
That's good. I just wanted to report out to the board on the Master Plan Implementation Committee's meeting from last night, and as you know Cheryl Tagheas is the chair of our committee. We're gonna have her come into a meeting probably in November or December to officially report on what the committee's doing, but just wanted to let the board know a couple of the things that we've been talking about. One is the, one is traffic issues, so we're still looking at the topic of a townwide traffic study and general traffic problems throughout town. We had a long meeting last night, we spent about an hour talking with Jeff Maxtutus, who was the transportation planner, he was a member of the Master Plan Team a couple of years ago that created the town's master plan. So, he discussed some different options, some resources that we may want to explore at the state for information, but also some software packages that might be available to help the Traffic Commission with some planning and discussion of any issues that come up. That, of course, would require an appropriation, and Tom, you're our representative to the Capitol Committee, it's probably late in the process for the Capitol Committee, but the Master Plan Committee began having its first meetings in the spring, and has been meeting regularly, I'd say almost monthly, we might have missed a month in the summer, and is really working pretty hard at some of these issues, including the wharf, which I'll mention in a moment. So, that's something that the Master Plan Implementation Committee may want to make a recommendation for. It may be late in the process, so it might wind up for a future year, but it's something that we're thinking about, and we wanted to let you as the Capitol Committee Chair know about that. The wharf area, we also talked about, we're still working on getting some proposals for the design study, including the dock issue that the crew team had, the Friends of the Milton Crew had raised with us. And we're looking at available resources that might permit some funding for that, depending upon what the cost might be. So, those are some of the things. Housing is another topic, but we have spent more time on transportation and on the wharf than housing at this point, but housing is going to be on, again, on a future agenda. We're focusing on the housing production plan and what we may be able to recommend in terms of inclusionary zoning to the planning board for further, not that they haven't had any discussions on that, they obviously have, but to, something that we might want them to follow up on, is a recommendation from the Master Plan Committee. Okay, it is now 7:15, so we are back to item number five on our agenda. I am going to be recused on this when I open my binder regarding RCN, I realized that an attorney I work with is, was involved in this transaction, so Mr. Burns is going to chair the meeting, and I'm going to step outside and I will return. And again, for the 7:30 hearing, if anyone is here for that, which is assigned for extra space storage, we will take that one as soon as this hearing finishes. Thank you, David.
Okay. This is item number five, it's a public hearing on the consent to assignment or transfer of control to the RCN cable television franchise. And we have with us Attorney Peter Epstein, who will be representing the town of Milton, in the consent to assignment or transfer of control of RCN cable franchise. At this point, pursuant to MGL Chapter 166A and 7, and Regulatory Requirement 207 CMR 4.03, the public hearing will be opened by reading the following public hearing notice. This public hearing notice is regarding the Cable Television Renewal License Transfer Hearing. Board of Selectmen of the town of Milton, as issuing authority, has scheduled a cable television renewal license transfer hearing to be held on Tuesday, October 18th, 2016, at 7:15 PM in the Corning Conference Room at the Milton Town Hall, located at 525 Canton Ave., Milton, Massachusetts. Purpose of this hearing will be to review the FCC Form 394, completed transfer request received by the town on September 12th, 2016. The Form 394 seeks the Board of Selectmen's approval for the transfer of control of the Cable Vision licensee from Yankee Cable Partners LLC to Radiant Holdings LP. A copy of the SEC Form 394 is in the Milton Selectmen's office and may be viewed during regular business hours. Interested parties can call the Board of Selectmen's office at 617-898-4843 for more information. So, if I could, present for this public hearing will be Peter Epstein, he's our town attorney, Thomas Steele, who's the Vice President of Regulatory Council for RCN, representing the transferrer, and Seth Davis of Mid-Sleven, Cohen, Ferris, Globski, and Papio PC, representing the transferee. Peter, I just want to recognize you and ask you to advise the board on the four criteria, management, technical, financial, and legal, that must be met.
Thank you. I do have an agenda, as you know, there are four criteria set out by the Commonwealth for the selectmen and their roles issuing authority to consider, so I have a number of questions for both RCN Yankee Partners and Radiant Holdings, which is the transferee. So, it may be useful, both gentlemen can come up here. I know we're being, I believe this is being recorded?
Yes.
That'd be great, thank you.
So, before we start, would you like to identify yourself for the record?
Yes, my name is Thomas Steele, I'm Vice President of Regulatory Council for RCN.
My name is Seth Davidson, I'm outside counsel to TPG, which is the parent of Radiant Holdings LP.
Thank you, thank you. So, if I may, I will go through the agenda. It basically consists of asking the number of questions of both representatives this evening, and then the selectmen have up to 120 days from the filing date to make a decision. So, if I may, we'll start. This hearing this evening is being conducted pursuant to the requirements of the regulation of the Massachusetts Division of Telecommunications and Cable at 207 CMR 4.0. The town published notice of tonight's hearing as required in the Quincy Patriot Ledger on October 3rd, 2016, and October 10th, 2016, and we will provide copies of those notices for the record. And pursuant to the regulations, a video record is being made of tonight's hearing. We are here tonight to question Yankee Cable Partners LLC as the transferrer in the transaction, and Radiant Holdings LP as the transferee regarding their request to the town to have the RCN cable television renewal license in Milton transferred to Radiant on account of the agreement for Radiant to purchase Yankee. Radiant's request is contained in the FCC Form 394, that's the black binder you received, which was dated September 7th, 2016. RCN subsequently submitted the $100 application fee to the town on September 12th, 2016, and that is the date the town considers the FCC Form 394 to have been completed. The current RCN renewal license was granted by the Board of Selectmen on November 1st, 2015, for a 10-year term, and for purposes of the viewing public, I think most of you know, there is also another cable licensee in the town, that is Comcast, and Comcast really has no role in this evening's hearing. Once the Board of Selectmen, as issuing authority, has conducted the public hearing, it will have until, up until January 11th, 2017, to render a decision on Yankee and Radiant's transfer request. I will be questioning representatives of Yankee and Radiant, the two gentlemen to my right this evening, on a number of transfer-related matters this evening, including the transfer in general, the FCC Form 394, the transferee's financial capability, its management experience, its technical expertise, and its legal ability to operate the Milton cable system under the existing cable TV renewal license, the financial implications of the transfer, and compliance with the current cable TV renewal license. If Yankee or Radiant is unable to answer any questions tonight, written responses should be submitted to the town no later than November 1st, 2016. This is a public hearing, and we welcome any input or questions from the public. If you have a question or comment, I would appreciate it if you could give me your name and street address, and speak clearly so that there can be an accurate record of everything that you are saying, and I would ask any questioners to be as brief and concise as possible. I think it would probably be useful if we could go through the questions, and then if the public has questions, to take those at that time. I think it will be a fairly fast process, not gonna take all that long. I did have Yankee and Radiant representative introduce themselves, so with that, why don't we go into the questioning? The first question is a general one, and that is if Seth would give the town a brief overview of the Form 394 transfer request.
Thank you, Peter. So, I appreciate the opportunity to be here and brief you and answer your questions. I'm here representing as a TPG and Radiant, which is its affiliated company. So, the transaction that is described in the 394 is, 394 specifically for the town of Milton, but it's basically the same 394 for all of the different operating systems that RCN has. And currently, as you know, RCN Telecom Services of Massachusetts is the entity in Massachusetts, there are other similar companies in other parts of the country. This transaction involves all of them, as well as a separate related transaction involves Grande Communications, also ultimately owned by Abri, which is RCN's parent, in Texas. And in the transactions, the 394 describes the transaction and describes what we believe are the benefits and the lack of harm to the town and its citizens. And just very briefly review the transaction itself, it involves Yankee Partners, which was the other named party on the application, is the indirect owner of RCN Telecom Services Massachusetts. It itself is a subsidiary of Abri. This past summer, an affiliated company with TPG entered an agreement to purchase the RCN operating subsidiaries, and they're, at the end of the day, when the transaction closes, a new company called Radiant Holdings LP, which is the transferee, will be the parent of all of the operating companies. Radiant Holdings LP itself will be, the general partner will be completely controlled by TPG. Most of the equity, almost 80% of the equity, will come from TPG investment funds. TPG is a leading private equity investment firm, it's been around for 24 years with over $70 billion in assets under its management. And it will have most of the equity, there are three other minority, non-controlling equity investors, one of which is Google Capital, an affiliate of Google, another one is an affiliate of the Dragon Ear Private Equity Group, and the last part of the equity is coming from members of the Patriot Media Management Team, Patriot Media being the management team that has been running the RCN systems on behalf of Abri and Yankee up until now. And I think, and that leads you to where we think the benefits is, you get enormous continuity, for one thing, out of this transaction. The Patriot Media Group that's been running these systems and operating them will remain intact, will continue to operate them, so from the standpoint, we believe for both the citizens and the town itself-
And for the president employees.
Yeah.
And president employees will be, continuity. And that group, Patriot Media, which have experience with, I mean, is made up of longtime professionals, well-respected in the industry. So, to the extent that there might have been other choices for Abri to consider selling to, I think TPG brings to the benefit of that continuity, no reduction in competition, they're prepared to continue to compete with Comcast, to build on what they've invested here, and continue to improve their systems. I think the other thing that you get is the benefit of this larger, TPG is a larger investment company than Abri, and they've got, prepared to sort of improve their investment by working to continue to improve it. They also will get synergies and efficiencies because of the, now bringing Grande under one umbrella. And so, we point out in the public interest benefits section of the application, in terms of purchasing programming and other acquisitions, they'll have the volume of picking up the volume from the Grande systems down in Texas as part of one umbrella. So, we think those will help hold down costs in a time when you can do anything you can to hold down costs, and still allow them to continue to move forward. One other thing about TPG to mention is that they are, they have been very involved in the tech world for their investments, they've been internet-oriented, Uber is one of the companies they've invested in, Airbnb, so they look at modern technologies, new technologies, internet-based technologies. So, getting in now and being a provider of those services is, fits nicely with some of the things they've already been doing. I don't know if that, Seth, take it over here?
You know, I like to keep it really simple, it's like one investment company is buying another investment company. And at the core, the Abri management team is staying in place, and we can get another seven-year contract to manage RCN, and we continue. So, for us in the company, it's seamless, and for those in the community, we'll honor the recent renewal, we'll continue on with what we're doing, and so it's a very high-level transaction that has minimal impact down below.
So, it sounds as if, as you're saying, that residents can expect absolutely no change other than potential upgrades for what Attorney Davis-
I mean, the company has been on, has had a program of upgrading to DOCSIS 3.1 for its internet service, and they intend to continue to-
Do you know what that means?
It's a faster-
DOCSIS 3.1 means you can get a gig in your home. And what you're gonna do with that gig, I don't know, but you can-
Yeah, so that's-
That kind of thing will happen, and continue the Abri record of improving customer service and realizing that's a key to a competitive model and success. So, we're excited with TPG's-
The goal here, as with any investment company, is to increase the value of the investment to the investors, and the way you do that in this industry is you make the investment more attractive to consumers who would buy your product.
One question I do have, you know, obviously competition is wonderful, and we're glad RCN is here, you know, so we're not yelling with just a Comcast, but one of the problems is the small amount of houses that RCN is able to, right now, connect to. Is there any plans to increase that competition by getting to more houses? And I know it's been a-
Yes, it, you know, there are longer-term plans that involve other technologies that could solve a problem of having houses that are widely spaced and being costly to connect and to build to. Maybe there's a wireless solution in the future, that's something that goes off our fiber, but for now-
Nothing immediate, though?
Yeah, for now, we look within our footprint to expand, and there will be opportunities to expand in Milton, we were close to doing some last year, and may revisit it as well.
Okay, good question.
It won't be any inhibitor, TPG will not be an inhibitor, but rather urge us to expand, you're doing that already.
Okay, great.
Okay, just for the record, I know that Seth mentioned the financial capability of the transferee, but remember, the Commonwealth has four primary criteria, so I would just say, ask for the record, ask why Radiant believes, and remember that the questions tonight are basically directed towards the transferee, not the transferrer. Why Radiant believes that it has the financial capability to assume control of the Milton cable system.
Thanks. As I mentioned, the TPG as a whole is a very large equity investment firm, it has, the funds that are contributing, the TPG funds that are contributing to this acquisition have $8 billion of uncalled capital available to them. They've also lined up financing, $1.6 billion in financing, they have a $150 million revolving credit line for just liquidity purposes. The financing that they're bringing in will replace the debt that Abri has, so they will start off in, I think actually, a stronger position than Abri is, but having replaced their debt, having an equity position, they're bringing in a half a billion dollars of their own equity. So, their plan is to, I mean, their plan is to make enough money, they don't have to invest additional funds, but they have additional funds to invest should the need arise.
Sure.
Billionaire, billionaire, presumably around one.
Can you state for the record that the purchase price for Yankee will not have an adverse effect on RCN subscribers in the town here? That's always a concern when you have these transfers, that certainly the issuing authority wants to do all it can to make sure that that purchase price is not going to have a negative impact on the subscribers here in town.
Yeah, I think, again, the goal here is to acquire this and continue along the same path that it's- path that it's been running without, again, these are systems that are competing with a large competitor, and you want to make it an attractive buy for the customer. So there's no plan. And the financing and the purchase price were decided upon with mind of being able to operate that kind of continuity.
Okay, all right. I would say, before we get on to the technical expertise, that it is interesting that in 2016, you have a company like TPG that is buying RCN, which primarily operates cable systems. I think that's a good thing. I think it's a positive development, and there's certainly players in the field who would have you believe that the future for cable systems, infrastructure systems, is not quite so rosy. So I'm assuming this is a real vote of confidence in these cable systems, and I think that's a good thing. All right. Can you explain in some detail why Radiant believes that it has the technical expertise to assume control of the system here? Again, this is the second criteria of the Commonwealth.
Well, again, I think that comes back to the continuity, again, with Patriot Media, which, as I noted, is a big veteran cable professionals, the same folks who've been running the system, have been pushing the system from a technical standpoint to improve. And I think they will have the resources and they have the expertise to continue that.
Patriot team has own systems in Puerto Rico and other parts of this country, and they have a rich background in running systems. And so they're, when I say, it's like the CEO, the CFO, the COO, the guy in charge of programming, the chief engineer for the network development, the internet side, all those men and women form the team that we look to for leadership in those states.
So in your tab number six, you have biographies of key personnel, first from Patriot Media, and you have Mr. Simmons and Mr. Alanda. So these are all the people who you would expect to maintain.
Yes.
Their position. The person we did not see was Tom.
Yeah, I love a patriot dad, but I am an RCN person.
All right, so I think it would.
Well, I'll live that.
It would be useful if, in the follow-up, if you can just state for the record that Mr. Steele would be, you would expect that.
You didn't say me to say it.
He didn't say me to say it. But that, you know, the issue here is that, I'm sure TPG is a fine company. It's an investment company. It's not itself a cable company. It has hired, it's going to maintain Patriot to do this, and the local person who is doing this is Tom. So I would appreciate it if you could send us something, Seth. It simply says that the local person, because you're relying on Patriot. I mean, if you call TPG and say, you know, we've got a problem here with processors, and we're not quite sure if they're connected, well, they're not going to know. Patriot might know, but the one person locally, I assume, is your team. So it's Jeff. So I think there should be some explanation in writing that the local team, and it's not just Tom, it's Jeff Carlson, you've got some technical people. So I think it would be useful if we got a letter that just says, by the way, we think it would be useful to augment Schedule Six, I think.
The corporate management.
Yeah, that, to reference the local management, because these are the guys, these are the guys who are running the system. And I'll tell you where I want to.
Well, Tom's my ride back, so I definitely, not going to say anything bad about Tom.
No.
But we'll definitely provide you with a further statement.
Okay. The third criteria of the Commonwealth regarded, regards the management experience of the transferee to assume control of the Milton system. And if you can also explain that particular issue for us, Seth.
Well, again, I think it's the same answer as before, that you are to the tech, these folks know, these guys know the cable industry from the operational side, the technical side, the local side, public policy side. So they're tied in.
It's a good team.
It's a very good team.
Okay, okay. And as I recall, when the previous transfer occurred, and that was from RCN to Abri, wasn't it?
Yeah, Abri Partners.
To Abri, yeah. I mean, it was similar, as I recall. I mean, Abri was basically utilizing local management as an ongoing team to run the system. All right. So, you know, I have a question here about personnel at Radiant who will be responsible for cable regulatory affairs and interacting with the town. But I don't know if you have anybody on that level who will actually be interacting with the town. Sounds like not.
At this point, I don't think we do. At this stage, I mean, Tom is our person and his team. I think after the transaction, from someone who's an employee of TPG, I think TPG will rely on the people it has in place, who may rely on its outside counsel.
From my experience with Abri, it's going to work the same way with TPG. They have the board. We do our budgets. Everything gets into the board for approval, and then it filters down for implementation to us. The Radiant, TPG role will actually be exerted at the board level.
Yeah. And members of Patriot will be members of that board.
Patriot has one on Google.
And one Google, and then TPG. So they'll be, they'll be local, in effect, the people with the understanding of the local situation will be part of that board.
And that Google, is it, is it a subsidiary of Google?
So Google Capital is a subsidiary of Alphabet, which is now the parent company. So it's a sister subsidiary of the Google that we all refer to, we refer to Google.
Okay, okay.
But they're both sister subsidiaries.
We could ask questions, but I think we're not going to ask those questions. Just to clarify, when the assumption of control occurs, you will maintain this system as the current licensee. It will still be RCN Telecom. You're not changing. Okay, that's fine. If you can tell us the fourth criteria, why you believe that Radiant has the legal ability to operate a cable system under the existing license?
Well, I think, again, I think the only hurdle we have in terms of a legal issue is getting the board's approval for the transfer of control. Beyond that, they're qualified citizens of the United States. They're, I don't know of any legal impediments, and again, the main thing is wanting to get your approval.
Yeah, okay. There are a couple of questions I have about the 394 itself. In Section One, question number six of the FCC Form 394, it asks for the proposed effective date of closing of the transaction, assigning or transferring ownership of the system to the transferee. Again, the transferee is Radiant. And Radiant has answered, quote, "As soon as closing conditions are satisfied." So can you just briefly explain what that means?
Well, we need to get the approval of the Federal Communications Commission as first starters, and that process is underway.
Okay.
It's been put on public notice. There's comment deadlines, and we expect that to move fairly quickly. We need state approvals from some of the states in the operate, as well as the local approvals. So there's a lot of different approvals, a number more of these kinds of hearings. We're hopeful that they'll move along. We've run into the holiday season, things can slow down a little bit. But we're hopeful that early in the new year, certainly in the first quarter, is what I think we would hope.
I'm hopeful that particularly, we have every number of hearings, and that the approvals can come fairly quickly after the hearing. I appreciate that, because the holidays will soon be upon us. But, you know, Peter mentioned earlier, the 120-day period is a sort of overall period from the date of the filing. So that takes us into January and then soon thereafter. If you did nothing, then by law, it would be on that.
We appreciate the towns that proactively, after approval, there are some towns that will simply let the 120 days, we can't count on it being fast.
Yeah. You know, Milton has always been involved, and, you know, I agree. I mean, I think towns are better served by making a proactive statement, saying, look, we've done this, we've gone over this, we've had some follow-up, and we're satisfied with the qualifications, and we approve, rather than just having it be a default. So you don't, do you have a date for the closing, or you're not, you're not really sure?
We can't, again, because of the, you know, we sort of step out the 120, because there's going to be a number of places that we'll just let that run. We don't know yet the FCC, the deadline for FCC comments is Friday.
Okay.
So once we see if anyone comes in, we'll have a better sense of whether the FCC process will move fast or slow. And again, we're in an election year, there may be changes of personnel at the FCC. So it's a little tricky to predict a specific timeframe. We think that first quarter is the likely.
Okay. So clearly, the July, the January 11, 2017 date is the end of that period. The selectmen can really, anytime, I think after the 60 days, decide to vote. But the January date is the, is the end period. Theoretically, the board would, you know, if it votes to approve, and your overall transfer has not gone through, what happens during that interim period? In other words?
We're getting approvals already, so we just approve, we pile them up.
And then once, I mean, at a point where you can close the transaction.
I mean, Abri Yankee Partners remains in control until the final.
And then there would be, I believe, we, once the closing occurs, we'd formally notify.
Yeah.
That the closing now has occurred, and so that, effectuating the approval.
I'm confused, you know.
I think there was going on in Section Three, question one of the Form 394, requires the transferee to certify that it has sufficient net liquid assets on hand or available from committed resources to consummate the transaction and operate the facility for three months. You did state previously, and in the Form 394, that Radiant has such a net liquid asset. I don't know if you, if you want to just make a brief comment again on that, but I know that you did address that earlier.
Again, so the total purchase price of the two transactions together is $2.25 billion. There's $1.825 billion of new debt, and then equity contributions of $528 billion, and the five-year revolving of $150. And that actually adds up to more than what you need. And that's because there are other fees for the, financial fees related to. So they're, there's ample funds to not only close the transaction, but to be operating along with the revolving debt, which is over on top of the amount needed for the purchase. So they feel they've got enough for the purchase and.
While we're going through this process, I've had some renewals come up, for instance, that we didn't anticipate there being a change in ownership. And TPG has been nothing but supportive of the new.
The new franchises.
Yeah, we're there.
Okay, good. A couple more questions. We had talked about the legal ability to operate the system. You know, typically, I would ask if Radiant has reviewed the current renewal license in Milton, or is this something that, again, you're relying on your local team to basically take care of all these matters?
Well, as part of the due diligence in going into the transaction, I had a team, I had a team of people reviewing all of the franchises.
Okay.
And we also had extensive conversations with Tom and the RCN Patriot folks to make sure we understood everything in those.
I want to clean up your files. Just go through a due diligence.
So Radiant has reviewed the current renewal license.
I have a very large room filled with franchises.
All right, well, that's good. Well, Radiant comply with all the terms and conditions in the current renewal license?
Yes.
Are there any provisions in the renewal license that Radiant believes that it will be unable to comply with?
No.
Okay. Are there any provisions in the current renewal license that Radiant considers to be commercially impracticable?
No.
Okay, good. In Section One, Part One, question 2B of the 394, there's a question asking if the merger agreement, quote, embodies the full and complete agreement between the transferer and the transferee. Radiant and Yankee have affirmed this. However, the merger agreement in Exhibit One, which is really what takes up most of this binder, is heavily redacted. In explaining the redactions, Yankee and Radiant stated that, quote, "Certain exhibits and schedules to the above purchase agreement have been redacted as they are not necessary in order to understand the terms of the purchase agreement, contain confidential trade, business, pricing, or marketing data, and are not otherwise publicly available." Again, that's in Exhibit One. I think that, and it's not so much Yankee, although I guess it's both parties because it's your merger agreement. Yankee and Radiant should certify at this point, for the record, that such omitted information that has been redacted is not germane to the issuing authority's consideration of the Form 394.
Yeah, it is, it is not germane.
Okay. And the legal basis for the redactions? I don't want to get into a long.
Again, as we say, the confidential and sensitive business information, as the FCC rules provide for maintaining the confidentiality of that sort of information, it's.
Okay. In Schedule 1.1 of the purchase agreement, there is a reference to a DOR lien, and that is, the file date is January 18, 2011. Can you just explain what this is?
I'm going to have to have someone, we'll provide you a written answer, because to be honest, I don't, I don't think I can.
All right. I mean, I just saw these things, and, I mean, it does say permitted liens. I'm not quite sure what a permitted lien is. There's also a lien, the secured party is the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So I think that the debtor is RCN Telecom of Massachusetts, even where, for example, there's a Cummings Properties LLC. I don't know if these are relevant, but perhaps in a follow-up, those first four Cummings, Department of Revenue and the Commonwealth, if you can just briefly explain those. I mean, this is just due diligence. Number 15 on page 33 of the purchase agreement, there is a reference to, I didn't think I read this, did I? There is a reference to Schedule 3.21B, and I can't find it.
All right, we'll.
I don't know what it is.
We'll get back to you with that.
May not be important. All right. And finally, if you can just briefly explain why the Milton Board of Selectmen is issuing authority, should approve the Form 394 request to transfer control of the Milton cable system from Yankee to Radiant.
Okay. And I think just the summary of everything I've previously said, which I think this is a great option for the town of Milton, that it gets the same experienced team, a stronger financial backing, you know, reduction in competition, a company that's been on a path of improving the systems, bringing them to be competitive, and to force Comcast maybe to try to keep up with them. And so I think it's good for the town and good for its citizens.
Tom, do you have any additional questions?
I do not.
Well, I first want to thank Seth for coming in, and thank Tom, and of course, Peter, for your diligence. We have some questions. It's an open hearing for the public.
Richard Neely.
Come on up, come up, Rick.
Peter, we met 20 years ago. We hired you as a deputy counsel.
Peter, we met 20 years ago, we hired you as the deputy counsel.
20 years ago?
20 years ago.
Well, I had hair, but maybe it was more than 20 years ago.
I just, in the interest of the number of customers that RCN serves currently, and the second question is going to be the, give us a sense of the scale of the buyer, Patriot, as compared to Comcast, in terms of either revenues or in terms of subscribers? Are we talking about a small buyer, or are we talking about somebody who's competitive in the world with Comcast that can provide competition for programming and other services?
Tom, you know the.
Right, the subscriber number is relatively low for the community, it's on 800 or so.
Yeah, probably should get a little.
Roughly about 800. It's a low number, and it's one we're constantly working and trying to improve.
So that's the number of Milton families that would be impacted by the transaction?
And, and overall, I mean, RCN nationwide, obviously, no one really compares to Comcast as a, on the cable side. I think, so they're, they will be in the neighborhood of approaching, with the Grande combination, about 500, 600,000.
600,000 will be top 10.
Be in the top 10.
Because the company's getting so big, there's so few of them now, we're going to be, we're going to lead.
So they'll, they'll be bigger, and then, again, TPG itself, as I said, has $73 billion in assets under its management control, its various investments, so it's, it operates as large, it's not just in cable, though.
In cable alone, in comparison to Comcast, is this 25%, 10%? What scale?
Well, it's interesting, you know, when TPG came, came courting, that this would be really their first major investment in telecom itself. They had some previous ownership of Altel or something. So what they're making up for in the experience of owning companies is an enthusiastic entry into a marketplace to provide the service. They've been trying to do this for a while instead. So we're, we're small compared to the.
I just think for the record, when, as you go through the finish of the process, the board should have an understanding as to expertise and the size and scale of the buyer.
Yeah, again, any. Well, here's the record, there's biographies of the, as Peter mentioned, there are biographies of the, the team, and someone like Steve Simons, who's been in the cable industry for 30-plus years, there's, the expertise is all there.
We've been at it now for.
These are built companies from the ground up.
We've been at it for 20 years, and with the advent that, you know, FiOS is not here in Milton, but FiOS is in a dozen of our other communities, so we, we compete not only with Comcast, but with Verizon at the same times, and we've been able to hold our own.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do there any other questions from the public?
Okay, seeing that. I would just remind people in RCN and Radiant that the record is being kept open until November 1st, so any follow-up, if you can send that directly to the town and a copy to me, that would, that would be appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Thanks again, Peter. Thank you. Okay, at this point, I can.
Get Katie back in.
I'm Adam Chair back in. Continue the meeting.
How's it going? How are you?
Next item on our agenda is a 7:30 hearing, a public hearing on the Extra Space Storage signs, and we're joined by our planning director, Bill Clark. And Bill, would you like to introduce our guest?
I want to let Rich do it, introduce himself.
Rich Prechoryus, Prechoryus Letaker Sign, 267A, South Main Street, West Bridgewater.
And you're here on behalf of Extra Space.
Extra Space and North American Signs.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a planning board representative, or a recommendation for a planning board?
Don't know. Bill, do we have a representative from the planning board coming tonight?
No. This went through sign review, this went through the planning board. There is a letter, I believe you have the letter in here, from John Zee, from the sign review committee.
You have the letter from the sign review committee, yeah. It has been our practice since the town meeting a couple of years ago, where there was a request from oratorium, we said we'd have the planning board at the hearings. We don't have a representative of the planning board here tonight. Have they had any discussion about this?
Yes, they have, and it's the same sign that's up there, the same sign, that it's just getting smaller, changing the logo itself, going from lowercase on extra space to uppercase on storage. Now it's going to be uppercase for the first letter, and everything else is lowercase. The signs are smaller. I mean, where one is 50, it's now 35 to 37. The other one's like 22, so it's about two to three feet smaller. The lights, instead of having the, if you look at it right now, there's kind of a cloudy light that comes out from behind it. It now will be a little bit crisper because it will be an LED light that is back there. Again, this is going to be halo lit, it's not channel lit letters, it's, from the back, halo lit. This, I've had a lot of people come up because of the public notice. I think the biggest issue was the lit sign up against the, not, not the one on the front, the one on the side, on 88 Wharf, and it does say in your motion that the lights will stay on while they are open. Their hours of operation are 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and the lights go out 15 minutes after the business shuts down.
This, this side?
Yep. That's the one on.
That faces the railroad tracks.
Yes.
So we, we jumped ahead of ourselves a little bit, but we've officially opened the public hearing. Bill, I just want to get clarification on something you just said. You said, we've had a lot of people come up. Do you mean coming into the office to ask questions, or do you mean people here this evening?
No, 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 come up to me during the week to, to view the.
The application.
To view this packet. You've got seven pages, it's the same one. I've given it out several different times to people in the building, and as soon as they see it and they hear it, oh, okay. The last one was this morning, and actually, nope, there were two people waiting in the hall, and I, when I was told to be quiet in the hall, it was because I was explaining the sign. They, they heard it, they saw what it was, I showed them the pictures, and they're like, good. I know that the, the only other issue was the one about how long it would stay on at night, and it's in the motion, and it's the same way now, it goes 15 minutes after closing.
The one on the side facing 88 Wharf is a lit sign also?
They're both the same.
Both the same, okay, so they're both halo lit?
Yes.
Okay.
They're both that way now. If you look at, if you look at the one on Adams Street, you look at it, it has kind of a cloudy look to the letters.
Right.
It'll be a little more crisp on the new one.
But no brighter?
No brighter.
Okay. And the sign review committee had made some recommendations that have all been accepted.
The only one that they had a, that they made a comment to was that one right there, the office sign. The original proposal was to put it in a box and have the box lit. That won't happen, the letters will be mounted to the building. There's enough lights underneath the overhang itself that it doesn't need to be lit.
Okay.
Okay, is it Mr. Bojole? I want to get your name.
Prechoryus.
Prechoryus. Do you have anything you'd like to add on behalf of Extra Storage Space? You're their contractor or their designer for the sign?
I'm their installer.
Installer, okay.
Yes. It's just that, you know, the new signage is about 30% more condensed than what's up there. It's halo lit, it's, the design review was, was okay with it. Not much, I'm not going to say that, sorry about that.
Okay, so we do have a memo from the sign review committee. Do we have any questions from the board for the sign installer or for the planning director before we see if there's any public comments?
Hi, Joe.
No, I was just concerned about 88 Wharf and the residents there, that they were okay with the redesign.
Their, their big thing was no lights all night, and that it's not bigger, not brighter, and it's not.
And it complies with that, okay.
Any, any other comments or questions? Okay, is there anyone here from the public who would like to be heard on this matter in favor of the sign application? Seeing, not, is there, yes, sir.
Michael Burke, I'm.
Why don't you come up to the table, sir, and I can pull up a chair for you?
Michael Burke, I'm the representative of 88 Wharf Street tonight, and just wanted to state that we are in favor of this.
Great, great, thank you. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. Is there anything, anyone else from the public who would like to speak in favor of the sign? Is there anyone else who would like to speak against the sign application, or have any comments or questions? Okay, we did get a note from a resident of 88 Wharf Street, I'm just going to read it into the record, it's very short. It says, "I will be out of the country, but I'm definitely opposed to these lights," signed by Shirley Di Libero at 88 Wharf Street. So I think we've had some discussion of the lights, they're going to be a little bit crisper, but not brighter, is that correct?
Yes. And just against the wall, it'll just be a glow, you know, against the wall, it won't be anything.
I think we're really not adding any, any new signage, and we're not adding any new lit signage that was lit before. It's condensed, so it's smaller.
Condensed by 30%, so it's less of everything. And we know that we'll put into the motion, shut off 15 minutes after closing. Their posted hours are 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, so they can turn them on 5:45 and shut them off at 10:15.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So we do have a memo from the sign review committee recommending in favor of the application, and unfortunately, there's no one here from Extra Space Storage Company tonight, but there, I just mentioned to the town planners who are standing outside, that there are some temporary flag signs at the location which need approval from the town administrator, do not have that approval in this case, so we're going to have to get in touch with the company about taking those temporary flag signs down, and we generally have tried to discourage flag signs in the town, so the town administrator will, I'm sure, follow up on that separately.
I'll talk with Joe in the morning.
All right, thank you. And why don't we close the public hearing if there's no further comment? And do we have any discussion by the board, or would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the application submitted on behalf of Extra Space Properties 72 LLC for the replacement of two existing channel letter type signs with two updates and slightly smaller channel letter type signs on the front and rear hand side of the building at 2 Adams Street, and add one cabinet type sign at the office facade, as the applicant has demonstrated. A, there is a reasonable need for the sign. The applicant operates a business, extra storage. At 2 Adams Street, the building is described as Stuer 1099. The address is located in the business district. The building is located at the end of a driveway where, at which an elevation below grade on Adams Street. The proposed lights will help to identify the business for vehicular pedestrian traffic on Adams Street. B, there is a reasonable basis for exempting the sign from the applicable standards. The building is open for customer access from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, so illumination is necessary for patrons to see the sign. The cabinet sign applied for will be unlit to indicate the location of the business office. C, the exemption of the proposed sign from such standards will not have a substantial detrimental effect on the community. The two new lit signs are replacements for existing signs, and the total area of signs is reduced compared to the existing condition. The building is located completely in the business district, and each of the illuminated letters, lettered signs face other business district properties. In accordance with Section 3C5 of the Milton zoning bylaws, the Board of Selectmen hereby issues a permit for the proposed sign upon the following conditions. One, the design, mounting structures, mounting structure dimensions, lettering, lighting fixtures, and illumination of the signs shall conform with the pictures and specifications submitted with the application, copies of which are attached hereto and incorporated by reference. If the applicant wishes to illuminate the cabinet sign indicating the office, another application must be made. Two, the sign shall be illuminated only on days when Extra Space Storage is open for business. Three, illumination of the sign shall cease no later than 15 minutes after the close of business on each day that Extra Space Storage is open for business. Four, violation of the condition of this permit, which is not cured within a time satisfaction of the Board of Selectmen, shall be the basis for modification, amendment, or termination of this permit by the Board of Selectmen. And five, this permit shall expire if Extra Space Storage ceases to occupy the building at 2 Adams Street, Milton, or if Extra Space Storage Properties 72 LLC ceases to operate the business of Extra Space Storage located at 2 Adams Street in Milton. And I'll second that motion.
Okay, and for purposes of the record and for anyone watching, the motion is drafted by town council, it contains the findings that are required by the bylaws. It's also based upon the recommendations of the sign review committee, so it incorporates their findings and recommendations. Is there any discussion on the motion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a conference with our Town Administrator Search Committee, and we have several members of the committee here this evening. I'd like to welcome some or all of them up to the table.
Good evening.
Hi, Gene. How are you?
Good.
Rick.
Evening, Rick.
Good, Rob.
Would you all just introduce yourselves for the public?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Gene Boylan, I'm the chair of the Town Administrator Search Committee.
I'm Rick Neely.
Rob Milt.
And thank you all for being here tonight. You are a committee of, I believe, eight members?
Eight members. Our other members are, first of all, were appointed by this board and by our town administrator. And there are seven citizens of Milton. Besides the three of us, they are Frank Davis, April Lammerow, Joe Reardon, and Mary Rife, and Mike Gillette, the current town administrator of Westwood, is also appointed as a member of the committee.
Thank you. And thank you all for your, your hard work and your efforts, and we're here tonight to hear your recommendations. And you've gone through a very long process. Gene, however you'd like to present this, if you'd like to describe the process, but.
I was going to describe the process for, for yourselves, and if you have any questions, please ask them as, as we go along. And at the end, present our recommendations for your consideration.
Great.
So we, as a group, we started on April 14th. We had 18 meetings. We responded to the charge that this board had put together for, the charge basically is to recommend to the Board of Selectmen, for their consideration, three qualified candidates best suited to perform the duties of the town administrator of Milton. So we started by establishing a process which first was advertising, and then was interviewing, and then was narrowing our total pool of applicants, using the qualifications and job description that this board voted on. We advertised online and in print. Online with the Beacon, which is the Mass Municipal Association's online publication, they also have a print publication, it was in there as well, it was on the town's website, thanks to the assistance of Anne Marie. And it was likewise on LinkedIn, it was in print in the Boston Globe, as well as monster.com, and we also used indeed.com. We established a deadline for applications of July 15th, and we received 48 total applications by the 15th of July. We first selected individuals out of that group who met the qualifications that the board had established. We then used a three-step process to interview and evaluate all of the applicants. So the first process, the first piece of it, was a 20-minute phone screen, where we went through about seven or eight questions, what individuals knew about the community, what their background was, why they were interested in this, and touched on some of the situations that they may have encountered in their, their current work. Out of that, we reduced the field. We then went to the second interview piece, which was a, an in-person interview, sometimes in this room, which was about an hour and 15 minutes, where we walked each applicant through their education and their employment history, and delved into, in some detail, all of that, particularly incidents, I shouldn't say incidents, I should say situations in their employment where they had succeeded and where they had not succeeded. We then came back and, after reducing the field again, and had a 40-minute interview, which consisted of two things. One, the presentation to us of a couple pages of writing that they had done on a particular topic, and then a presentation. topic, and then a presentation to the committee as if they were presenting to this board on one of the matters that they had selected. That was about 40 minutes. We took all that into account, and that was what we used to select the three finalists that will present this evening. Any questions? Anything to add to that?
Certainly a very thorough process.
Yes.
Yeah, a very rigorous process and conducted by a quality group, obviously. So we appreciate the thorough way that you guys went about this business.
I think the other thing I appreciated too is, I don't think there was one time that we had to ask, hey, what's the committee doing? Because we've got so much feedback throughout the whole process from you, which we really appreciated.
That's a good point. And you guys met 18 times. You regularly updated us. We have spoken on the phone a number of times, you know, to get updates as well. And so, you know, I'd like to piggyback on what you said, Tom. We've really been kept abreast of this whole process, which is really a healthy way to go about business.
Good.
But let's add to that, that we did not know the names of the candidates that you interviewed. We knew about your process, but not your pool of 48 candidates.
Didn't have any idea of them.
In case anyone's wondering, it was the Search Committee maintained the confidentiality of all the applications. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for those comments, you know, for, I think, the entire group. We appreciate them and value them. So the three finalists that the Town Administrator Search Committee recommends for your consideration to be the next Milton Town Administrator are Blythe Robinson. She is the town manager in Upton, Massachusetts. Anthony Marino, he is the assistant town manager in Hanover, Massachusetts. And Michael Dennehy, he is the commissioner of Public Works in the city of Boston. I should add, before we, if there are any other questions, that we all would like to thank everyone who assisted in this, this board, our town administrator, the staff of the town administrator, as well as the board, and appreciate very much the help and aid that they provided all the way along. So we stand ready to answer any questions you have.
I do have one, Jean, and maybe it's not available, but by any chance, were the presentations that you had, each one of the people do, taped or...
They were not taped.
They were not?
No.
Okay. Just the bottom. So, you know...
Are there other questions or comments for the Search Committee? Turn this volume down.
You know, I just, you know, I guess to the three of you who represent the committee tonight, you know, obviously, we gave you the criteria. What were, I think, some of the major factors that you guys looked for to narrow that pool?
I'll comment briefly, and then Rob and Rick may have something to add. We took a process that looked at what you might characterize as technical skills and people's skills. And we had an entire page of those, and we, in terms of technical skills, that would be something like familiarity with all of the aspects of finance, budgeting, capital budgeting, operational budgets, the entire town budget. Another aspect of that would be familiarity with public bid laws. Another aspect would be familiarity with the open meeting laws. So things that are in law or in common practice when it comes to operating the town of Milton. And then we took a look at those things that related to people and dealing with people. So leadership, the ability to build consensus, the span of control that an individual would exercise in the course of their duties, how to deal with adverse situations, how to communicate effectively in the different ways of communicating verbally now, online frequently, in writing, communicating to constituents, citizens of the town, communicating to employees of the town, working with department heads, how to deal with a group of individuals that you hadn't worked with and get yourself connected and aligned with them. And also then, if you look at the communication aspect, how to communicate with, across a span of a year with all of the stakeholders or all of the interested parties who they would be dealing with. How to communicate with the board. We went through in detail the fact that while the board is three members now, there is a vote coming up that would allow it to become five members. We talked about the timing for implementation of that. So we tried to cover both of those aspects, what you might call the technical things, as well as the personal and the communication aspects. And we overweighted the personal because that often is a true measure of success and leadership when it comes to someone in the role of town administrator. Anything to add?
Thank you, Jean. I think Jean has done a great job summarizing. I think certainly in terms of service to the community, in terms of providing services to the community, there's a real, there's an emphasis by all the candidates in terms of sensitivity to providing good service to the community and treating this community as a customer. I think that's very important, and that's what you'll find that these candidates have exhibited, a strong intent on providing the communication that Jean talked about, as well as being sure that there's a strong constituent services to the residents. And certainly in terms of working with people, whether it be with this board or working with the other many elected boards we have, and working closely with the other administrative personnel that are the employees of those boards is very important. So certainly, those are some of the criteria, and some of the, in some cases, it's unique to Milton. Obviously, many towns still have many elected boards. But we also looked at their recommendations, their thoughts on townwide issues such as economic development. So we listened to what they had to have, they've had for their experiences, as well as their ideas, possibly from Milton. So certainly, these candidates have demonstrated some very positive thinking about the town and have exhibited some ideas that they would try to present to the board, and I think that's something you'll look forward to seeing. But I think you'll find that these candidates represent the best of a very competitive process.
Great.
Competitive group candidates.
I think each of these candidates is forward-thinking, committed to the use of technology to help drive and improve delivery of service to citizens. And each, I think, is very committed to reaching out to all members of the community and being a conduit to government and to government services. So, you know, I think that we have a really, getting down to this group of three was a challenge because we had a great number of highly qualified candidates.
One thing to add might be that we asked them and we pressed them, and they presented ideas on new initiatives. So they're, they bring different perspectives, but we were interested in taking us from the good point that we're at to even greater progress in the future. And they bring the assets that they have, given their experience, their skills. But in conversation certainly with some members of the board, that was, that appeared to be an important aspect, to be able to push forward and continue to innovate and to do so successfully. You know, one of the things that did come up, and I think it probably came up more than once, was the realization about the limitations in terms of our tax revenue and how to be innovative and creative in those difficult circumstances sometimes to really deliver constituent services.
Great. Well, it certainly sounds like you were looking for all of the right things in a candidate, and, again, an incredible amount of work by this committee over a long period of time. And we'd be remiss if the board, if our board did not recognize our current town administrator, Ann Marie Fagan, who has stayed on beyond her intended retirement date, continuing to be just an ever, all-the-time presence in town hall, working around the clock sometimes. So still working her usual schedule and still committed very much to the town and is willing to stay on through the transition period. And so thank you to the town administrator, who I know has been of some help to this committee also.
Yes, certainly. Very helpful.
And I'd like to follow up on that. And, you know, we're very fortunate to have someone like Ann Marie, who's so committed and put so much time and effort. And when we finally do select this next town administrator, that they will have the luxury of having someone with this institutional knowledge to help carry us forward. And, you know, not always do you get someone who's as selfless as she is to give back this time.
Yeah, willing to spend the time, stick around for a little while.
Well, I would say the committee recognizes the importance of what maybe you might call the onboarding, the bringing whoever your choice is onboard, and the connection with all of the important individuals and issues that exist here for helping them to really have the greatest success they can.
Yeah, and it's a big job, and we all know that. It's the most important hire that we've had to make, and it's a bit of transition for us as members of the board because the role has changed. The strong town administrator is now, in fact, the CEO of the town, and we are more in a policy and advisory role. So we'll be looking for that leadership and looking for Ann Marie to help give guidance to our next town administrator.
Any other comments or questions for the Search Committee? Perhaps we should talk about the process, too. We've designated next Tuesday evening for our interviews. Is it the consensus of the board to have them here in this, in this office, or to have it at a different location?
Last time, we did it at the cable studio, which I think worked out well. I mean, it's hard to say, you know, how much of an audience you're going to have, really, but, you know, and there was some audience last time.
That would be the only item on our agenda. There is room for some audience here, probably a dozen and a half or so people.
I'm open to what you think. I mean, if you've done that and that's, that worked well, then I would be fine with that. But if this, if you don't think you're going to get more than that, then I wouldn't change the location.
Yeah, I mean, I'm...
All right. So why don't we plan on this room?
Okay.
Okay.
And we still have to get all our questions together and get them into Ann Marie.
Yeah, we're submitting our questions to Ann Marie and...
Yes.
And Paige.
And Paige, and you'll vet those and...
Okay. Okay. And then depending upon, well, I guess we'll have to see how the interviews go on Tuesday. It may be that we want to have some one-on-one conversations with the candidates. We've talked with town council about whether that's permissible, and he said that there's no issue with the open meeting law.
Right.
Each of us individually may want to talk with any of the candidates. This committee, obviously, has been spending several months getting, they're now very brand-new to us, so it's, we want to act with some, the advice to us has, from the committee and from others, has been to act without some, without delay, with some haste, knowing that these names are new to us, and we don't, we have not met the candidates. So this is, this is going to be, it's an opportunity for us to have to get up to speed and to read the material and to meet them and interview them, which the committee's already had the advantage of doing a few times. So we want to balance the need to act quickly with also the need to thoroughly vet them, and it is the most important decision that the board would make, at least, at least one of them, if not the most important.
Sure.
Well, we would agree on both counts in terms of the necessary process that you all will go through, and as Katie mentioned, the one-on-one conversations, as well as the, let's call it all, or whatever the characterization was, in terms of timing. So we agree with both of those, for what it's worth.
So what is the consensus of the board for next Tuesday? Spend probably 45 minutes or an hour with them. I'm assuming we'll have several questions, and it may take that long for each one of them. And then to have a discussion after that, defer a vote to the following week? What's the, what are the board members' thoughts on that?
Again, I would prefer to try and make a decision that night if we could. I mean, I guess if we don't have a consensus, then, I think you want to be a consensus of, you know, the unanimous consensus. And I guess if we don't, maybe then postpone it till...
How has it been done in the past, Tom? The last time, was it...
It was done one night.
Was the vote taken on the night of the interviews?
I believe it was.
Because that seems to me as though we...
I thought it was.
My thinking on that is that...
It was on the next week? Okay.
My think...
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The interviews were held at the MPEG studio, and that was the next week that it was announced here.
That's right.
My thinking is we will be possibly meeting them for the first time that night, but unless we have some one-on-one meetings beforehand, but we may want to, you know, digest the interviews for a little while.
Might.
Give some further consideration to them based on some of what the responses were. It may be that we want to look at additional materials or check some references. I suppose we'd only...
Or references are well checked. Yeah, see, I, I, this group that we've empowered has done a tremendous job. I mean, I think that they've, they've gone through everything with a fine-tooth comb, and I think that, you know, for the sake of lack of micromanagement, they have done this, the due diligence for us. They've put, they're putting the three people that they believe, you know, with their backgrounds, and you look at every one of the members on our committee, they have extensive backgrounds in a number of places that really serve us well. And I think that, you know, I kind of oppose having conversations with anyone individually, probably. I think that the conversations could be different from you, me, and Tom.
I think they would be.
They definitely would be.
And I don't know that that helps anyone. I think that an interview is an interview. I think that, I trust that this group has picked three people that they think could be leaders of the future, and I think that's our goal, is to find someone who's going to be a long-term leader here. We've had four town administrators in the last 10 years. I think our goal is to find someone who will take us long into the future.
I mean, I have two thoughts. Number one, logistically, do we have enough time for all three of us to interview three people individually in the next seven days? You know, which could be a chore. But number two, I do have a little concern, and I expressed that to Jean, that I think you've got to be very careful if you're going to do a one-on-one with somebody, that you don't say anything that could be misconstrued, could be...
Compromise the process.
Yeah, exactly. That it, I think if I were going to do a one-on-one, it would be a two-on-one, I'd have somebody else in the room with me. That's a good point. That's all.
Oh, yeah, certainly. That's a possibility. I mean, obviously, not, wouldn't be a board member, but someone else.
If you're asking for what my decision is, I'm in favor of interviewing the three on next, on the 25th, without having any prior discussions with any of them.
We might all have a different view on that, and I think that's totally permissible. We may want to handle it different ways.
Yep.
But we reschedule anyway for the 25th, for the interviews, and then it'll be a matter of, do we want to decide, do we, are we looking for additional time after that? I am concerned about us being rushed because...
Well, yeah, if you feel rushed, then we shouldn't.
Yeah, I agree.
Because it's a very important decision, and, you know, we, we rather, the board is going to be making the appointment and working with the candidates, so we want to have enough time to vet them and to be sure that we're comfortable with the choice, but the committee has spent a lot of time on this for us. We're starting the process now.
Right.
So, okay. So it sounds like we're going to go to the interviews on the 25th. We'll have some kind of a discussion afterwards. We may or may not, at that point, have a vote.
Mm-hmm.
We may decide we need additional information, or it may depend on whether we've talked with any of the candidates beforehand or not, or whether we're comfortable that we have enough information at that point. That's what I'm hearing.
That's what I agree. Yep.
Okay. Do we have any other questions or comments for the committee, or anything further from the committee?
I do not.
Anything from the town administrator? No?
No. Thank you again, Jean.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rob. Thank you, Rick. Thanks to all the other members. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Good night.
Good night. All right. Number eight on our agenda is a conference with our police chief for an update on the department's activities. Good evening, chief.
Good evening.
Good evening, chief.
Thank you for coming in tonight, and thank you for waiting.
Hello, Colonel.
So we have a written report from you. Would you like to go through it or just touch on the highlights, whatever your preferences, chief?
Sure, I'll just be very brief. It's just a summary of what's essentially happened in the police department in the first three months of my tenure, so July, August, and September. I just categorized them... September. I just categorized them very briefly, not to take up too much of your time. But as far as some technology enhancements, we have modernized several constituent services, parking permits for both service on hardship, signups for DICAM. This upcoming Saturday, we're having a police cadet exam. We've turned that to a completely online process, from the announcements, to the signups, to the payments, to the exam results. So, that seems to have worked good for the residents we're dealing with in town, and as well as creating less paperwork in the police department. We're also currently working with Tom and Rob, myself and Lieutenant Alba, on the website design. We're going to basically completely revamp that, make that a more user-friendly system with more information and easier access. We also, as you're aware, we've implemented Smart 911 technology. It's basically a private vendor, but it works with the state 911 system and allows individuals and facilities to create accounts with information that can assist first responders during emergencies. And residents can basically add whatever they want, medical information, photographs, personal, or as little as they want. And it's private. We have no access to it unless that person was to call 911.
So, is that now online, or how does that process work?
Yeah, you sign up on Smart91.com. And, you know, for a variety of situations, somebody could, pictures of their children, if their kid was to go missing quick. Sometimes when we go to those calls, the people are scrambling through the house looking for pictures. We would already have it.
That's great.
Other things, you know, some people in town might be on oxygen tanks. You could have a power outage. They might need an immediate fill. So, now, on the original response, we could notify the fire department. We also have access to our crews as to oxygen. So, we go better prepared.
So, is that system up and running now? I mean, can, can residents right now go and sign up?
It is, yes.
Okay. So, can we get that on the town website and so forth?
We have put on the town website. We've put on the police website. We've done a fair amount of marketing. We did some outreach, council on age, and schools, and so forth. And that's still ongoing. The state itself, not to confuse anyone, is coming out with what's called Enhanced 911. And that will be out, they won't give us a firm date. The first few departments, about a dozen, went online very recently. And they have been out to our building to put in the hardware, the wiring, basically, but it's not in our town yet. But Enhanced 911 is a state improvement that will include the ability to text, send photographs, videos.
So, that's very similar, Chief.
It is and isn't. There's some distinctions. There are some similarities. The Smart 911, you can text to the person who called you, but somebody couldn't initiate a 911 text. With Enhanced 911, you can. If somebody was on the street and saw a suspicious person was saying they took a picture with their cellphone, they could text that with the upcoming Enhanced 911. Smart 911 wouldn't allow for a photo like that. It would have to be preloaded, like you created an account for John King. And when you call 911, anything I've preloaded would appear. Enhanced 911 is more for an emergency, you know, the situations you hear on the news, like a kid hiding under their bed and they can't talk if somebody's in the house. They could initiate a text. Or, you know, things that came out of the Boston Marathon, somebody could send a video clip directly to 911. So, they're two different ones, private vendors, Smart 911, the system that was purchased by the prior chief, is just being implemented under my tenure. Enhanced 911 is a free state.
So, that is a free, the Enhanced 911 is free as opposed to the private one being paid?
Correct.
Okay.
Since this is such an important thing for seniors and young families to take advantage of, Chief, could you just, again, mention how, how does somebody go about getting the Smart 911 information set up?
It's on our Facebook. It's on our website. But essentially, if you go to Smart911.com, it has all the information. It's very, you know, kind of takes you through step-by-step how to create an account, add what you want or not, not. And, you know, anybody can always call our station, and we can explain on the phone, or they can come in and we can help them.
And I don't want to get hung up on this, because I know you have a lot to do. But how long, what's the contract look like for Smart 911 since we are paying?
Three years.
Three years, okay. Okay.
Just moving on to personnel. As far as personnel, we hired two new police officers in September, Jordan St. Fort and Jason Sullivan. They're both currently in the Transit Police Academy. They started down on September 26th. We are in the process of hiring a third. We have tried to hire three altogether, but were unsuccessful. Another personnel issue, one member of our department, a police officer, has resigned during those three months. So, that's the one position we lost. And we've had a variety of FMLA leaves that have created some shortages. We had a patrol officer for an extended period of time, just came back, and also a supervisor. And we currently have a clerical member out on an extended leave. As far as community partnerships, I'll just mention briefly, it's, you know, everything you're all aware of and very involved in yourselves. We've been very busy, just there's been a lot going on, you know, working with the substance abuse coalition. We've done some initiative with the public schools. And these range from, you know, participation in community education forums, school-related security meetings, traffic safety improvements around the schools, and stuff like that. We also hosted, as you're aware, we have the civilian domestic violence advocate. We hosted the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety, as well as all the surrounding police departments at our police department one day. And basically, they came out to do an annual review of how that advocacy program is working in our department. That's funded through a Violence Against Women Act. And they came out, they did a review, and I was notified recently that they have renewed it. So, for another year, we will have this advocate in our police department who's very valuable. She follows up on every domestic violence incident we have, and it's at no cost to the town. We've also been working heavily with the National Anti-Mental Illness. Again, you're already aware of that, so I won't elaborate too much. And we are sending several officers to crisis intervention team training. That's never been done before. I think that's a positive thing. You know, mental health issues are heavily involved in substance abuse issues. They're also heavily involved in use of force situations in a lot of these arrests that you see in, unfortunately, on news programs. So, I think that'll be very valuable training. As far as crime and traffic trends, the, you know, I don't want to say total numbers, but the, you know, we deal with a lot of medicals and car accidents, things like that. But as far as crimes themselves, the leading categories for the last three months were basically car break-ins and domestic violence calls. That tends to be a consistent problem. And, you know, it still is. We're tackling, we actually had great success on a lot of the car break-ins. We got some really just great calls from observing residents who, you know, were paying attention to this around, to the neighborhood, and were quick to call us, give us good descriptions. And we had, had a pretty good stretch of some good arrests based on, you know, credit to the residents and credit to, you know, patrol officers that went down, really worked together as a team, setting up parameters and containing these people. So, in domestics, you know, unfortunately, it's a consistent problem. As far as traffic, I know you get many complaints about that, as do we. And, you know, we've significantly increased our efforts to target that. Just in that one quarter of three months, we did 562 designated traffic assignments. And that's in direct response to citizen complaints. That's beyond just an officer out on patrol observing a traffic infraction and taking action. That's actually the designated assignments in areas we've identified as a problem or a high complaint area. And I'll just mention briefly, evidence, you know, I know, again, from news, you may have seen the, what's going on in Braintree. Actually, prior to that, I'm glad to say, back in late June, when this board and Anne Marie notified me that I had been selected, but before I had started, I started searching for an independent audit of our evidence. I felt that was probably a valuable thing to do. And, you know, I was unaware of it having been done in my career. So, you know, I did identify a person that was suitable, contacted them in June. And they came in early July to start it. The irony is, they left to go to Braintree and Framingham and come back to us. And this is the person that Braintree, obviously, you know, situation evolved from. So, they haven't come back because they've obviously been delayed. So, in working with that, I do have somebody working actively, daily, on evidence, just going through it, preparing, basically self-ordinating everything. But this outside vendor will also do an audit and complete it.
So, is that something you would have on a periodic, regular basis?
Yes. I'm unaware of it ever being done. So, that's why it was such an important thing to me before I took over. So, once I have this done, I will. We'll do them internally ourselves every quarter thereafter.
Yeah, maybe every couple of years or something like that.
And then, every couple of years, bringing in outsider. And, you know, it's the catch-up that's the most important. This is a long, complicated process. But once we get it done, it'll be much easier to maintain that going forward.
Okay, that's great.
Well, that was very proactive on your part, Chief, so I'm glad you undertook that initiative.
And that's essentially just a summary. You know, I'm obviously more than happy to answer any questions.
Comments, questions for the chief?
Community policing, any more strides on, I know you have problems because of the, not being able to have fixed details, but...
Yeah, shifts create some problems. As I mentioned, you know, that we use a rotating shift system. It makes it difficult. And, you know, we're hiring a couple. Like I said, one of the three got delayed. So, staffing's always an issue on that. I feel like I personally have been involved heavily in the last three months. You know, I've been to the Chamber of Commerce. I've talked to a lot of people about their issues, some community groups and stuff. But the irony of us, me being so busy going to these means, I haven't had a lot of time internally to maybe change some of the staffing stuff. You know, you know, last week, recently, I just did the deputy chief with the assistance of everybody here. And, you know, that's the first step of, you know, other things to come. And hopefully in this quarter, I can do more of the internal stuff. I've just been so busy externally. But the good part is, I'm getting the information. I'm hearing from the residents, the Chamber of Commerce, the community groups, the business people. And now, I just need the time to use that information to kind of rearrange some personnel and people so that we can better respond.
That may be something you want to let everybody know who the new deputy chief is, because we all know him.
Yes, I spoke with Anne Marie. You know, that was just the end of last week. And we are going to put out some information about him.
Okay.
Can announce.
Oh.
We have appointed him, so you can announce him.
Oh, okay, we have. I didn't want to step on toes. So, the very end of last week, we appointed Lieutenant James O'Neill as deputy chief. He's been there just over 31 years. Like myself, he started as a cadet. So, he has a career where he's held essentially every rank, cadet, police officer, sergeant, lieutenant. He's currently the union president. He took that role when I left it. He trained me when I came on the job. I have worked with him in a variety of roles personally. And I've dealt with him, you know, when he was union president. I dealt with him on the management side. He's a very fair person. His work ethic, I think, is top-notch. Anything I've asked him to do in any role in his career, he does way beyond what I've even asked. And it's just, it's part of the character of who he is. He treats people fairly. He treats people with respect, both internally and externally. I think he's the right fit. You know, he's a creative person. He's got some good ideas. I think me and him are in sync in many ways. So, we'll work well together.
Good. Good choice.
Very excited. Good choice. My former Babe Ruth baseball coach, who, I've seen him in action. Yeah, he's a tremendous professional. And, and seen him in action at my own house with a break-in. And he is definitely deserving, and wish him well.
Yes, congratulations to Lieutenant Deputy Chief O'Neill now.
That's right.
And Chief, thank you for your four years of service on the retirement board. The town administrator passed me a note to, so that I wouldn't forget to thank you. We've, earlier this evening, we appointed Paige Ippolito to replace you on the board. But you spent several years on the retirement board. So, we thank you for your service on behalf of this board as our representative.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I love the board. I love the work. But I just, I've had a lot of night commitments as chief. And, you know, I felt that should be more important than the retirement board. And, you know, I heard Anne Marie's recommendation. I think she'd be a great fit from what I know of the board.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are on to number nine on our agenda, which is a discussion of a Massport board resolution that was submitted and some airplane issues. Just a couple of updates on that. At the last meeting, which was two weeks ago, we did not have it on our agenda, but the matter had come up between the time we posted the agenda and we held the meeting. So, I think at that meeting, I briefly mentioned that there's been some work that we've been doing with one of our town council, Charis North from Murphy Hesse, regarding a resolution that was presented to the Massport Board of Directors at their September meeting. And, David, I know that you were at that meeting.
I was, yeah.
Along with Representative Timblety and some representatives from Congressman Lynch and other Senate and congressional offices, along with a lot of residents from the town who organized the appearance before the Massport Board. The resolution was drafted by a resident of the town, Tom Dougherty, and it was presented to the board. And when we were notified of it that day or after the fact, the issue that came up was, the Massport Board, in order to really entertain working with the town, it really would have to be with the town government, the body, governing body of the town, rather than a group of residents, because the issue could be, well, another group of residents might have a different view. So, to that end, town council has been very helpful. She drafted a letter. I signed it last week. It followed a series of conversations and phone calls and some emails that we had to the Massport Board, seeking an opportunity to talk with them at their meeting this Thursday morning, October 20th. So, we submitted the request. And our understanding as of late today is that we would be speaking, if we wished to speak, we would speak during the public comment period at the beginning of their meeting. They do have an informational item about Milton on their agenda, but that's for an internal discussion by the board and not, not a back-and-forth conversation with the town. So, the proposal, what we're proposing, and what I want to get the consensus of the board on, is that the representatives of the town would speak at the public comment period, urging in the alternative that Massport either work with us on an ad hoc basis to test some things that we think would be helpful to Milton, along the lines of providing runway use data for a period of several days to the tower, so that they know what runways have been in use in communities that have been affected by airplane noise for a lot of days. The resolution, as it's drafted, is really related to the arrivals on the four hour and four left runways. That's the primary problem for Milton. We have issues with departures. But what we've given is, again, is a three or four series of bullet points that we'd like them to look at. Another option for the Massport would be to wind this into the MOU that they announced. We have not seen it. It is not yet public.
Right.
But they announced it a couple of weeks ago. So, what another option might be to wind our request into what they've proposed to do in terms of a test program pilot, test pilot program for airplane noise regionally affecting a lot of different communities. So, the plan is for us to go to the Massport Board meeting. The town administrator and I, town council may or may not be coming, but at least we'll be part of a conversation with those tomorrow to prepare for that. And also, a group of residents, but we would be proposing to have Tom Dougherty, who was very involved in drafting the initial resolution, take part in the discussion with us and present to the board why we think, why we've submitted the request and why we'd like to work with them to include these in the test pilot program. So, I want to be sure that we can report at the Massport Board meeting that this is an initiative of the board and would have the full support of the board.
Sure.
That's great.
Okay. And on airplane noise issues generally, we signed, a couple of meetings ago, we signed a letter about vortex generators that went to the major airlines that service Logan Airport. American Airlines contacted us after that and asked for a chance to come in and meet with the selectmen. We thought, rather than being at a public meeting, so the town administrator, Andy Schmidt, who's the chair of our airplane noise committee, and I met with two representatives of American Airlines this morning, and went over issues about vortex generators. We had Andy Schmidt lead the discussion, because he's probably the most knowledgeable person in town government on vortex generators. And he also got into other issues with them about when the gear is lowered from the airplanes and when the flaps are, are down, and the impact that those can have on noise so many miles out from the airport. So, he provided them with a lot of written material and showed them the 3D, that one of the Boy Scouts did the 3D version of a vortex generator. So, there's some discussion around that. And we were pleased that American came out and met with us. Was there government, government relations people who were here? One of them came up from Dallas, and one came from New York. So, it was a positive meeting.
It was very positive.
That's positive, right.
And we are working on scheduling our follow-up meeting with the, at the Logan Tower with the FAA representatives.
Great. Lots, lots going on.
Yes, lots going on in this topic. Our airplane noise advisory committee is...
It's good that we have such great advocates, you know?
Yes. And our committee is meeting downstairs tonight. So, I'm sure they're, Barbara Martin is our, is one of our representatives on that committee and is here tonight with us rather than being at the advisory committee's meeting. But I know they have a pretty full agenda of things that they're looking at.
I think that we all, you know, are anxious to get some positive movement on this. And it seems that, you know, with everybody contributing in various ways, we're starting to move the needle. Though I, you know, as you mentioned earlier, that town government should have that, the foresight and control over the initial dialogue, so that we can, you know, stay in good standing, you know. But I...
I think the important...
The volunteers and the people who are advocating, can't thank them anymore because, you know, it's their passion and drive that's helping fuel this.
And it is encouraging. It looks like there has been some, some movement at Massport and FAA. And certainly, the, the more we can do it through those channels, if, if they are really being sincere...
is a problem regionally, and that there's things that can be tested to try to come up with solutions that work for everybody. So, it's a, it's a positive step, and we just need to make sure it's, it's executed and everything happens that's going to happen.
Yep.
Okay, I don't think there's anything else, unless the town administrator has anything else on this topic.
No, I think you covered it. Madam Chair.
Okay. We've covered items 10.
We've got everything.
Through members and chairs' reports. Did anyone else have anything to report? I think we covered all the reports. Then citizens' speak response, future agenda items. As I mentioned, we're, we're going to ask the chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee to come in.
Yep.
Are there any other committees?
I would like to get a report, and I don't know if they're, they're ready yet, but the Year and Rank Committee, I mean, that committee's been around for a long time, just to see where they're at, what they're doing.
We're meeting.
I know you are, yeah, I know you are, yeah.
We're meeting tomorrow night, and, yeah, I mean, it's based on a number of variables, you know, and, you know, we're meeting from, on the DCR. We've, we've had some productive meetings with the DCR and Curry College, so really, it's, it's dependent upon the DCR to get back to us per our requests for, you know, at least timeframe.
Yes, I know, they're throwing out the 10 years right now.
Another committee that we're working on scheduling probably for November is the Shade Tree Advisory Committee.
Yeah.
To get them to come in and let us know what they're working on. Okay, if we have nothing else then for future agenda items, then I will move that we enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to real property, Zero Central Avenue, believing that having such discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board, and to return to open session for the purpose of adjourning.
Second.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Mr. Burns.
Yes.
And myself, yes. So, we are now in executive session.